Welcome. Okay, well, let's get started. Mr. Kimball, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Rankuma.
Aye.
Mr. Castillo.
Here.
Ms. Gill.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence. Um, Mr. Reitinger.
Here.
Gray. Ms. Moore. And Mr. Webb.
All right, would you all rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, now we come to adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
Move to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Rankuma. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? All right, we have an agenda. All right, now, ten minutes behind schedule, we come to item 2.01 on the agenda. We, Dana Lewis on the Housing and Human Services Division.
Hello, where should I go?
It's kind of virtual, so.
Okay.
Your imaginary podium is wherever you want it to be.
Okay. I'm Dana Lewis, and I'm the Housing Program Analyst with the city. And I didn't bring a PowerPoint because I knew I had ten minutes, and you were fitting me in, so I'm going to talk really fast. There you go. And I also have a Housing Commission meeting right now.
Wow.
And I'm the staff, so.
Co-located.
Our apologies for starting a little late.
Oh, no worries. Okay, so, the reason I'm here tonight is because we are actually in the process of updating the housing chapter of the Comprehensive Plan. I know that you guys recently had a presentation on the Comprehensive Plan. I'm not sure what section. But what we're doing is updating. We haven't had an adopted update since 2005. And so, we are going out to boards and commissions to kind of get input on what the housing needs are, and also just to kind of give you an update of what we've done in the Housing Department since 2005. So I'm whizzing through this. So, just to kind of give you an idea, since 2005, we came up with about five goals. Just, I'm going to whiz through what we have kind of researched and looked to see what we have done so far. And then our next step is to find out what we need to do in the future. So the first one was encourage the preservation and improvement of the city's existing housing stock. Things that we have done, if we get federal community development block grants, we actually fund a school program at Mount Daniel with those funds. But we also have done some home improvements in the city. And this is really important, especially for persons that are elderly or low-income that own homes that can't afford to make property improvements. And they've gotten letters from, you know, the code official that they need to make some upgrades, and they can't afford to do it. So we help them do that. And then we also have the ADU, the Affordable Dwelling Unit Program, that we operate through the Special Zoning Exception Ordinance. And we negotiate with developers to be able to do that, to put affordable units in each new development that's built. And so our second goal, and I apologize, this, my intern told me I should have copied this on the long edge, not the short edge, so flip it this way.
You've got it online, too.
Yeah, so, next time she could make copies. So, the second goal was to encourage a mix of residential housing types to meet current and future needs of residents at all levels of income. And so, the city is doing that. A lot of rental is being built. We actually kind of have a glut of rental right now. I don't know if you've noticed. But since 2005, 361 units of rental property have been constructed. In 2016, 512 units will open. That includes West Broad and Tanner Hill when it opens. And then additional 340 units are proposed at Mason Row. And so, our goal is to continue to do, create affordable housing with each new development. Our ADU program currently has, we did have 22 units, but in 2016, we had 18 new units at West Broad residences. And we also have 14 new units that are going to be opening at Tanner Hill. It's currently estimated that the Tanner Hill units will open in September, maybe. But the demand is really high. We have a waiting list of 50 people right now waiting for those 14 units. And so, we have a lottery tonight for one unit at North Gate, which is an affordable unit. And we have 22 people participating in that lottery for one unit. That's a two-bedroom unit. So that shows you what the demand are. And we have lots of schools, employees, lots of parents of your students, you know, that are looking for those affordable housing opportunities. And we just don't have enough, is the bottom line. And then our goal, our third goal was to encourage the preservation, construction, rehabilitation of housing affordable to persons with low and moderate incomes. And so, we have a tax and rent relief program for the elderly and disabled in the city. And we also partner with nonprofits in the city. The Winter Hill is the biggest partner that we have. They have 80 units of affordable housing for persons that are seniors and with disabilities. But they're full, they're always full. They hardly ever have vacancies, so it's really in-demand. And they also have a waiting list. The majority of the persons at Winter Hill have Section 8 housing vouchers. And they are pretty much the only place in the city right now that's accepting new vouchers. There are no apartments in the city that will accept a new voucher right now. Several have grandfathered persons that live there. But if a person, you know, finds out that their numbers come up, there's nowhere to go currently in the city. Goal four is to continue to create supportive and affordable housing for special needs populations. And one way we're doing that is we are, we put a RFP out for a group home. I don't know if you all have seen the little white house that is next to Sunrise. That used to be a group home, and we're going to raise that and build a new group home for five persons with disabilities. It'll be four persons that have severe disabilities. And then it's going to be an apartment on the backside for someone with a, that will have a higher function. So this is persons, adults with disabilities. And we have a lot of former schools' parents. I know, I don't know if you all are familiar, there's a support group in the city that's run by a former school parent. It's about 22 adult kids' parents that go to that support group. And they're all looking for housing opportunities as they're aging. And their kids are still, well, they're adults, and they're still living at home. They're really stressed out and don't know what they're going to do because they are getting older. And there's been a really high interest in that. So we're working with the Community Services Board to place Falls Church residents in that home when it opens. And then Kensington is opening where the Burger King used to be. And good riddance to Burger King, but I do miss the drive-through. But we do have a subsidy that we have worked out with Kensington. So when they open, they will have a subsidy. It'll be an account that persons that are lower-income can go to the Kensington and live there. But it's going to be very expensive. I don't know if you've toured the new office that they have over by Giant, but we're probably only going to be able to afford to have one or two lower-income persons there just because the, I mean, it's really high. Just the room and board is high, and then just all of the additional cost. That's probably about the best we're going to be able to do. But we're happy that we're able to do that. And then we get federal HUD funds that we give to Homestretch that we help pay the rent for eight residents at Homestretch. Goal five is to require the provision of fair and equal housing opportunities in the city. We do fair housing training for all property managers in the city. We do fair housing testing. Every year, we test at all the apartments in the city. We do race, national origin, all the protected classes to make sure. We have not had any findings since I've been here. And that's been 10 years. We also respond to health and property maintenance things. So, just to give you an idea of the changes in the city, the median, and this is from 2000 to 2013, and we're seeing more of the same. The median age fell from 40 to 37, 18 percent increase in families. And it's been an 11 percent increase in Fairfax and Arlington Counties. 40 percent increases in ages 1 to 24. 37 percent increase in ages 55 to 64. This is not news to you all. We have a really highly educated citizenship. Postgraduate degrees increased from 34 percent to 46 percent, while bachelor and high school diploma rates fell. Families that moved to the city in the early 2000s now have college-aged children, and baby boomers continue to age in place. Then if you look at this chart that says household income changes from 2000 to 2013, from 2000 to 2013, the city saw a 234 percent increase of households earning over $200,000. So it's more than doubled in our city. And then households earning under $100,000 fell by 82 percent, largely because there's no place for them to live. Arlington and Fairfax Counties saw similar increases of 275 percent in Arlington and 200 percent in Fairfax. And they also saw the same decreases in the $100,000 range. If you look at home sales prices, so this is what it costs to live in the city. And this is what your employees are dealing with every day. The average home sales price for detached is $716,133, which is a 132 percent increase since 2000. Attached, $718,094, which is a 137 percent increase. Condos are $402,000, which is a 226 percent increase. In 2002, the first million-dollar residential property was sold. By 2014, one out of five properties in the city sold for $1 million. In 2013, 16 percent of homes were sold for cash. I know it's really a bad, I live in Centerville because I can't afford to live here. So, according to all the localities in this area, and this is pretty much across the country, a household is considered housing burdened if they're paying more than 30 percent of their household income to housing costs. So it doesn't matter what your income is. You can be making $500,000 a year, but if you're paying more than 30 percent of that to your household costs, you're strapped. You can't afford anything else but your household. And so, all of our programs are based on that. Any affordable housing program that you go to in this region is going to be based on that 30 percent of income because we are not trying to make people more strapped than they already are. And then in the city, right now, 41 percent of city renters and 20 percent of city homeowners are currently cost burden right now. Since 2000, the median monthly rent in the city has increased by 65 percent. And that's from $965 to $1,588. Just to give you an idea, the West Broad Residence is a two-bedroom apartment. It's $3,300 for a two-bedroom apartment at West Broad Residence. Now, it comes with a lot of amenities, but that's really high. And we have 18 ADUs there, and we have three different tiers. We have 60 percent, which is for lower incomes. Then we have a mid-range, which goes up to 80 percent. And we're trying to hit that workforce income, which is a lot of your teachers. Because a lot of your teachers are kind of too high for a lot of our programs, but too low for a lot of other programs. So they would be 110 percent that workforce income. So we did that to try to get some folks like that in those units. And we were extremely unsuccessful. We could find nobody at those incomes to put in the units, mainly because they can go get, oh, did you have a question?
Or was it just because the bed was so small?
The problem is that a person who's at 100 percent of income can go in there and get a market rate unit and get a rent. You know, they're running rent specials because they've been kind of slow to lease up. I think they're currently like at 40 percent lease up. So if you get a rent special, which only lasts a year, your rent is going to be less than our ADU. But at the end of the year, it's going to go back up. So that's what we've kind of been competing against, but that's a temporary thing. And then just the last page is, we, you know, I know the city just did a visioning workshop not too many weeks ago. But a question that we have is, are we an inclusive community? If you look at this page, this looks at all of the occupations that are in danger of being excluded from living in the city. You know, just for an example, the teacher workforce units that we have that are at the Reed Building, which teachers and people that work for the school system have priority. We usually only have people live there for one year. They come, it's usually persons that just started out in the school system. They lived there for a year, they get a raise, they can't live there anymore. I mean, every year, we get a whole new set of tenants at Reed because, you know, even though it's affordable, it's not affordable at the end of the year. And if a person, if it's a two-person household, or if the household grows, they have to move because they just, you know, they can't afford to live there. So just giving you an idea. But these are the occupations, like a cashier that works at Giant. Their salary estimate is $22,000. They can't live here. School bus driver, $34,000. Can't live here. Preschool teacher, $36,000. Can't live in the city. Firefighter, $55,000. They can't be in our programs because they don't make enough money to get an ADU. Electrician, police officer, guidance counselor. I mean, these are all that, you know, occupations that are really in danger of being priced out. They live farther away, their commute, I mean, I drive an hour and 15 minutes to work, going and coming. I have kids in the school system in Fairfax County. I just can't afford to live here. And I'm not the only one. And so, this is something that affects your employees, students. It's just a real, and we have a lot of clients that come in our office that are in tears because they really want their kids to stay in the school system. They love it here, but they just can't afford it. And so, I, the reason I came is just to get your feedback. We're doing a housing survey, and I will pass that out to you all. But I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions before I leave. What does it mean to you to be an inclusive, an inclusive community in the city? And I know this is not news to Lawrence because he used to be our liaison for the Housing Commission for the board. And we used to hit him with this all the time. So, what does it mean to be inclusive to you all? When you're thinking about yourself, your employees, your students? I mean, there are pockets of poverty in the city. I mean, we are high-income, but if you look around, there's apartment buildings. And we have ADUs throughout the city. There's, you know, people that, like I said, you're strapped, but you're living in a nice house. I mean, you're, you know, to the wire on your household cost. So what does an inclusive community look like to you? I'm just throwing that out there.
Thoughts?
Well, for me, it's, an inclusive community means having a, not only racial diversity, but it also means socioeconomic of having those type of students within our school system. Because when our students graduate and leave Falls Church City, they're going to colleges, they're going into the workforce. And it's better for them, I think, to have a better understanding of what's out there in the greater Falls Church area than what they normally see here. And you're right, I think, I know folks that come to me. I've been living here for almost 10 years now. And I know folks who are actually somewhat surprised. Actually, I will tell my partner is somewhat surprised when I say, by me being on the school board. And this is more on the racial diversity side, that there's actually more people of color that live in the city than you think. And it's because when you are kind of just generally walking around Falls Church, you don't see it that often. And if you are a person like myself, and when he decides to come along with me to stuff, normally, we are the only two people of color in the room.
Me, too. I'm the third one.
Yeah. Which then makes them feel, makes folks think that it's not here, but it is here. But, you know, that's kind of what I see it. But you are 100 percent right that because of the cost of housing here, it does price most folks out. And the only way that some folks who may want to have their kids in the city is to go the rental route. And I know that's a tough pill for some folks to swallow. And I get it, that it's, you don't want to overcrowd the schools. But that's really the one way that, you know, of some of that diversity comes into our school system is via that route versus most folks with some of those socioeconomic pieces can't afford to buy a $700,000. I can't afford to buy a $700,000 house. So that kind of does give you that, that flavor of how do you try to address some of that. And it's, I think it's a big issue that I think a lot of folks in the city care about. But it's definitely one that is worthy of conversation. And it's something that continues to bubble up from time to time in the community.
Other thoughts?
Is there a way to get the developers to put up more ADUs?
The city currently has a policy for 6 percent. So we really can't, I mean, we can try and negotiate for more, but that was really tough to get us at 6 percent, which is a pretty average amount. But that is a goal of the Housing Commission, to try to put in our policy to have more. So that is something that we're, that we're looking at. But currently, it's 6 percent.
So what's, what happens at a place like West Broad where 40 percent of the apartments are rented? Will they, you know, is there a chance that rents will continue to go down there? Or people who are there for a year to get the rent subsidy then move after a year someplace else?
Well, we can't really say, but the city has a lot of rental right now. And Tanner Hill is getting ready to open up. Those units are going to be more affordable than West Broad, the Tanner Hill units. So, I don't really have an answer. I mean, I think they have been open for, let's see, probably about eight months or so. And I think they're still at 40 percent. And they're doing everything they can to get people in there, but.
But they haven't been reducing rents on them?
They have done those rent specials. They've also done things like they're not charging for parking, like for the first year, and all kinds of things to get people in the door. But the problem is, you know, when it runs out. So, it's going to be a tough sell. I mean, I've heard they're beautiful, but. And the people are very nice. And we, in one of our ADU units, we have a person who is pretty severely handicapped, but able to live on his own. They have been over backwards to make the, you know, improvements to the unit. They assigned a person, a disability person to work with that person and their family, like through the whole process. So they've been lovely. It's just the rents are too high.
Yeah, I didn't know if with the glut of rents, if we may see a decrease in rents throughout the city.
We're hoping.
So that they can fill apartments, and maybe we'll have a more inclusive community.
That would be great.
I will tell you from personal experience, it won't happen.
So just leave it empty?
Yeah, it's, I doubt it because even some of the more affordable things in the city, the rents have increased.
That's true. Broad Falls, Lee Square. I mean, all of these units that used to be affordable are no longer affordable now.
Is there any truth to the rumor that the Fields is going to be turned into market rate housing?
The Fields is going to be, you know, it's a tax credit property. So they cannot do anything until like 2026. So, that's not, I mean, and then Wesley Housing, the nonprofit developer, has burst right of refusal to purchase. So I don't think that's going to happen, but nothing can happen till at least 2026.
What is the Fields?
Next to Taco Bell, those apartments over there. Okay, so, do you consider the city of Falls Church to be inclusive?
Housing-wise?
Yeah, everything-wise. And I mean, and when we talk about inclusivity, it's not just race. It's economic, it's everything. In our vision statement, the city says that that is something that they value, is having an inclusive community. So, do you think that we're matching our vision?
I'll tell you that, those, for those who live just outside the city, or at least I've spoken to a couple of people who live outside the city, they see us as this, the word is not exclusive, but it's like a them and us.
The gated community.
Yeah, it's almost like the gated, you're right. Almost like the gated community. Or it's, we're in the city and you're not in the city. That's the, I don't know if we do it consciously or not, but that's, that's the perception. So if that sheds any light on, or if that adds to your question, I think that's. There's a folks who live right near the Italian Cafe on the other side of 29.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, that was their sense.
So Falls Church, not the city of Falls Church.
But not the, exactly.
And I know I have to go. Am I over? How am I done?
Good.
My other question is, based on what you know or may believe, which of these policy approaches to housing affordability in the city of Falls Church do you support? So I have three statements, and I just want to know which one do you feel is the best statement? The city of Falls Church should do more to increase both the supply of affordable housing units and the amount of people receiving financial help to live in the city. That's statement one. Statement two is the city of Falls Church should continue to do about the same as it does now. The third one is the real estate market of supply and demand alone should determine the mix of housing and its cost in the city. You can give me your feedback now, but this is part of our housing survey, which I will send to all of you all if you prefer to do written comments. But I'm just getting some verbal feedback.
I would definitely agree with one.
You want to expand on that, or?
Oh, I mean, I think with the city, clearly, the city is currently doing, according to your presentation, is not enough. And it's led, the real estate prices are going through the roof. And before you know it, it will be a gated community. If only the wealthy can afford to live here. You know, where, what will our schools look like? You know, what's this community going to be like if this continues in this trend? I think what's happening now is there's a trend, and it's, it's not a good one.
Other thoughts?
And your thought could also be that things are fine. I mean, a lot of times I make this presentation and people are shocked. Affordable housing never has even been an issue that has, they thought, applied to them. But when I start talking about the people that need it, where they go to shop, like Harris Teeter is getting ready to open, where are all those people going to live? That's going to be a lot of employees in that building. I mean, and those are minimum wage positions. And so, where are they going to live? They're going to be commuting in the city every day. I mean, all the ADUs are taken. I mean, that waiting list, those 14 units are going to fill up like that with 50. And we haven't even marketed them yet. That's with no marketing, 50 people on the waiting list.
I guess I would answer your question with a question. What jurisdictions do you think get it with respect to affordable housing?
Honestly, all the jurisdictions are having the same problem. I mean, honestly, because this, it's a regional issue. I think that just because of our size, it's a little more pronounced here because there's not a lot of land to build, you know, affordable housing on. But like Fairfax County and Arlington, they have a lot more programs because they have a lot more people and a lot more money to address the issue. So, I mean, that's, you know, one thing that's happening there.
And that was one of my thoughts. Is this a regional issue?
It is a regional issue, definitely.
And so, are the solutions at a regional level?
I know the COG, Council of Governments, is working regionally to try to address the issue. So, most jurisdictions feel like it's something that we have to do regionally, but also locally, because we, we know our localities and what's going to work for us. And we need to have the support of our jurisdictions. And that's something we're working on, is trying to educate people that there is a need, because a lot of residents don't realize that it is.
Let me ask this, and maybe I heard this already somewhere. You don't have to own affordable housing only in your jurisdiction, do you?
Say that again.
As in, the city of Falls Church could, could own, could the city of Falls Church own affordable housing outside the city?
Yes. As a matter of fact, our affordable housing policy, we were researching everything. So that is absolutely an option, because there's no land, well, there wasn't land until the school land. So that would be something that would be one way to address it, to put affordable housing in the school land. But that is an option that we put there. So, if we were to build something right outside the city, and city residents were to get priority, if the city were to put in funds or whatever, because we're so landlocked, then that's something like the Housing Corporation has looked at properties right outside the city to try to do something like that. They haven't found anything as of yet, but yeah, absolutely, we'd be very open to that.
Because I think the land would be a lot less expensive than what you could find, if at all, in the city.
Yes. And the city has an affordable housing fund that developers put contributions in. It's not a whole lot of money in there. It's about $300,000. But we could use that money as, you know, maybe a starter fund or something to try to build something. So that's what we're hoping to do. So yeah, that would be a great option. So yeah, that would be a great option.
That would be my suggestion, is start to look at just outside and get something. Buy the land at least, and worry about building it later. But at least then you've got control of that.
Any other comments? And then I'm going to leave you guys.
Well, thank you, Ms. Lewis, for coming, and we look forward to receiving your survey.
Thank you, guys. I gave you my card, and if you have any questions, just give me a call. I'd like to get all of your emails so I can send you the survey, so if you want to add something else. Who should I?
I can.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Hopefully we had corn.
All right. So next up, we have our technology assessments, Dr. Jones.
There you go, let's turn it over.
Evening, everyone. I have someone that is going to be dialing in.
To enable audio control, please enter your audio pin, followed by the pound.
Hello?
Good afternoon.
Hey, Gary, it's John.
Hi, John.
So can you see our screen?
I can see a screen of background of a runner running across the beach.
It's a very, it's a very calming background.
It is.
So I just turned on the webcam. You should be able to see the attendees.
Oh, boy, you need to see me, too?
If we could, that would be, that would be beneficial.
All right, let's try it.
So while Gary is getting that piece going, I don't know if we'll be able to. Good evening, school board members, school business officials. Just wanted to take a little bit of time to discuss our network assessment. We have a few items here. We'll do some introductions. We'll talk about the project scope of work, the work that was performed, the assessment results, our recommendations. We have set aside some time at the end for questions and discussion, but as we're going through, obviously feel free to ask any questions as we go along. I'll try to decrease the use of acronyms in this session if I do get to some and we need to explain. We have Gary on the line, who is our technical analyst. So I'm John Grace, I am the project manager for this engagement. Again, Gary Soucy is our technical analyst. He is certified information systems security professional, so that's the CISSP, and he's also a Cisco certified network associate. Just to kind of give everyone a little bit of overview on our firm, before we kind of get into the scope of work. We were founded in 1974. We have over 290 professionals with 37 principals. We have offices throughout the country. Our main office is in Portland, Maine, so that's where I'm based out of, but we do consulting across the country. We are an accounting firm, so as such, we've been identified as one of the top 100 firms by Inside Public Accounting. Also being an accounting firm means that we have to go through CPEs or continuing professional education every year. We do that a couple of different ways. For someone like Gary, it's going out and getting those certifications for a technical analyst. Other ways, it's just being involved in the industry, doing regular speaking engagements, performing best practice and client research, and then just working with schools and cities and counties across the country. This is probably a very important point to us, is that we do consider ourselves independent and objective. We do not sell or develop hardware or software. We do not partner with software developers or solution providers or hardware companies. What that allows us to do is primarily provide objective IT consulting services so that anything that we recommend is in your best interest. So looking at the scope of work that we provided, Falls Church City Public Schools retained us to assess your network, and we really looked at it from three different areas. One, doing a general network assessment, one from a firewall assessment, and then another from the core router assessment. So these are all areas that involve your network. For each of these areas, there were actually a number of what we call controls. So basically, these are questions that we go through and ask the organization. I want to say there were about 122 of these controls, based on a number of different, if you want to call them, industry best standards. For any of these areas, we determined if Falls Church City Public Schools was compliant, partially compliant, or non-compliant. And there were some instances where a control may not have been applicable, or we may have needed more information. Any of those instances where you were either partially or non-compliant, that's where we provided our recommendations. So at a high level, when we look at the work performed and the folks that were involved, it really started out the very beginning with an initial project planning teleconference. This was a teleconference that we had with the project team, really just to kind of identify who we would meet with when we come onsite, and really identify what are the documents that we need to review and look at before we do come onsite. We facilitated fact-finding sessions onsite in March. We also toured a number of school facilities. From there, we basically took all the information that we gathered, took all the information that we reviewed as part of that documentation, and worked to develop the draft network assessment report. As part of our fact-finding sessions, we utilized basically a customized MX Excel workbook based on a number of these different industry best practices. So again, a lot of acronyms here. I think the important thing to note is that these are kind of industry best practices. What we do with these, what we call controls, is we modify them based on the size of your organization. So these can be some very large controls and very controls that are used by the IRS, the federal government. We took those as a starting point and modified them, again, based on the size of your organization. So as a result, again, of that first onsite meeting and of all the documentation that we reviewed, at a high level, we found that, you know, there were 43 percent compliant, just under 7 percent partially compliant, a little over 20 percent non-compliant, and then in the area where we needed some additional information, as well as areas that were just not applicable. When we kind of look at this in a little bit more detail, we look at each of the areas that we discussed. So first, the general network assessment, as well as the firewall and the core router. So in each of these assessments, we looked at a number of different areas. One was audit and accountability, one was configuration management, one was risk assessment, another was system and communications protection, and then last but not least, was system and information integrity. Across each of these, this is where we identified areas that were compliant, partially compliant, non-compliant, where we needed additional informations, or those that just did not apply. I also do have, if we need to, the report that has the full details of these, but I figured it'd be a little easier just to go through a PowerPoint presentation that identifies each of these. So the report itself has all the detail to support these findings. Again, when we looked at the firewall, we found that there were more non-compliance than compliant. Partially compliant was relatively low at four, and then with additional information at two, and non-applicable at seven. For the core router, again, this was an area that was very highly compliant, a couple that were, needed additional information, and then 18 that weren't not applicable. So after we provided the drafted needs assessment report, or excuse me, the current environment report, we reviewed the report with the project team on July 5th. In following that review, the Falls City Church, Falls Church, excuse me, City Public Schools increased compliance from 43 percent to 62 percent. So that's, in a short amount of time, a very high increase in compliance. So that's very good. To be able to turn that, you know, from 43 to 62 is good. And, you know, some organizations, you know, see, well, we're not 100 percent compliant, you know, what's that mean? It's not a bad thing if you're not 100 percent compliant. And, you know, I may have Gary jump in here as well, but, you know, compliant means, you know, when you're compliant, that means, you know, you're kind of at or above, you know, what the industry standards are. Would you agree, Gary?
Yeah, John. And the other thing is that these controls are used as best practices, and I know you mentioned that earlier, but compliance is oftentimes used, for instance, in terms of requirements for particular organizations. So for instance, you know, the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Services would require compliance with NIST 853 as an example for a Medicaid system. The IRS has compliance for their IRS Publication 1075 that would be required for various tax departments and things like that. So those are, those are areas of compliance that are required for specific organizations. But having, and doing that as part of our purview within the Barry Dunn team, the assurance team that I belong to, we oftentimes use those as just the best practices. So that area of best practices is how do we, you know, how do we evaluate security in terms of areas where it may not be a requirement, but we want to make sure that you're as secure as you can be? So we use those best practices, we use those guidelines for other organizations as well. So that's what we did here.
Could I just ask a question? What are the challenges with respect to Falls Church City Public Schools as a general network, I mean, compared to other types of networks? What are the things that are more or less important as compared to other kinds of enterprises?
Sure. And I'll answer that, Gary, and then I'll probably, you know, have you follow up as well. I would say, actually, compared to other organizations, you're probably above where other organizations are as it relates to security. You've got a very strong team here, very knowledgeable team, that would, you know, and by turning around the, you know, the areas that we had from partially or non-compliant to compliant in that short period of time is actually very impressive. Gary, what would you say, you know, if there are any areas that need to be focused on, you know, for the organization?
Right. So, you know, we like to evaluate every organization based on risk, and so every organization is going to have a different level of risk. And to evaluate that risk, we take a look at what sort of data are you protecting, what sort of things you need to keep secure. So every organization is going to have a different set of standards and guidelines that we would want to take a look at. And so with this particular engagement, we were looking specifically at the network itself. So looking at the network itself, we applied various, areas of controls where we found guidelines to be able to identify and evaluate how to look at those controls in terms of, you know, where in the network, router configurations, you know, firewall configurations, what areas were, where there may have been weaknesses, and, you know, that's where we focused on, and then we focused on providing recommendations on those weaknesses. Does that answer your question?
Well, let me just press a little more. I mean, what are, give me the top three bad things that we should be worried about happening.
Did...
Hijacking of, I mean, will it be student data gets taken, there'll be a massive DDoS attack on exam time and nobody can do exams? I mean, what, what is, what is the network's vulnerability and how would we perceive it?
Sure. So you ask a very good question, because, you know, we all hear areas within the news today of various organizations getting hacked, or you, I'm sure, heard of ransomware, and you've heard of all of these different areas that can be based on, on various techniques of hacking, such as phishing, spear phishing, social engineering. And all of these are areas that any one of us could be vulnerable to. And so without getting into too much detail, the fact of the matter is, is that we're all vulnerable, and a lot of those vulnerabilities go right down to training and awareness. Does your end user know not to click on that link by the Nigerian prince to say that you're going to get a million dollars? So hopefully, everybody knows that by now, and we've seen a huge uptrend in awareness in the general population throughout the country. The, but to answer your question specifically, to determine that particular answer, in order to identify the exact threats against any specific area, there would generally be a penetration test. A penetration test and vulnerability scanning would be able to identify exact, direct vulnerabilities within the system, and then be able to map those to direct threats that would be based on the common vulnerability areas. So there's, there's any number of different threats that are out there, we're all vulnerable to, but we did not take a specific look at that. We did not provide a penetration test, we did not do those areas, we did not get into those areas where we would find those specific answers for you. So what we did do was take it from that generic, not generic, but that general higher level, and be able to identify areas that we know are generally weaknesses. So for instance, if there were areas that we're using, areas that we know already are vulnerable, controls of protocols and ports of protocols on the routers and firewalls, you know, is Telnet being utilized, is FTP being utilized? And those are areas that we know are specific weaknesses that are out there. There are compromised technologies and compromised protocols. So based on that, and on our initial findings, and you can see in this particular slide that John has, that some of those areas, which did include, you know, perhaps Telnet was still turned on on a machine, although it may not have been being used, we know that we worked with the team to be able to go in. I know Rick's team was really, really good about working with us and being able to remediate some of those findings that we found almost immediately, and you can see the reflection of that within the compliance matrix. Does that, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, thank you.
Hold on.
So after we reviewed the draft and provided the feedback, we came back, and, we didn't come back, but in the report updated each of these areas, I don't think there was any update to the actual general network assessment. The focus, as Gary said, was more on the firewall and the core router. So these are the areas where the compliance increased and the non-compliance decreased for both the firewall and the core router. We did have a number of recommendations, again, in that first draft, but after we reviewed it with the team, we found that a number of those recommendations had already been done. And so really, in the updated version of the report, you know, the recommendations that we have here are, you know, trimmed down, you know, because there aren't as many areas that are not compliant or partially compliant. So in each of these recommendations, there are areas that, you know, the recommendations are pretty technical, but we reviewed them with the information technology staff. They have an understanding of them, they know what needs to be done. Usually, kind of the next step is to kind of continue on with these, you know, remediations going through and addressing these recommendations, and, you know, it... And, you know, it could, it could lead to additional, whether it's a kind of a risk assessment or other assessments that can be done, but usually, the next step is going through and completing the recommendations. So again, I put the PowerPoint together just to pull out some very specific information in the report. I think the latest version of the report was about sixty pages long, so I wasn't going to go through each page of the report here tonight. If folks have any additional feedback on the report, obviously, we'd be more than willing to take that feedback, make any additional updates. If there are no updates, then, you know, we would kind of consider the report final and, you know, have the IT staff work on the recommendations that we provided. Do we have any, I guess, questions for myself or Gary or for the staff that we met with?
Mr. Reddinger.
So I'll have a few, although there are actually more for Rick than I think they are for you.
Okay.
My big question for you is, it was a little odd to me that you picked IRS Pub ten seventy-five as the control framework that you used while referencing eight hundred sixty-three. I would have thought you would have used something like the CIS twenty critical controls or something that was a little bit less targeted, because a lot of the controls here dealt with FTI. And since the school system doesn't process FTI on occasion, you referenced it, but sometimes you said it's not applicable when there's information that's equally sensitive to FTI that the schools have, which is federal taxpayer information, but would need to be similarly protected, such as by defense in-depth mechanisms and network segmentation and those sorts of things. So I'm a little curious as to why you chose ten seventy-five.
Gary?
Oh, yeah, I can address that. That was my choice, primarily because IRS, being a federal-level guideline, set of guidelines based on NIST eight hundred fifty-three, and it's a nearly one-to-one map between NIST eight hundred fifty-three and the IRS Publication ten seventy-five. Those, that ten seventy-five document, IRS has done a really good job of breaking out into controls, the exact steps that you would want to take to be able to perform a network assessment. And so using those, it made it, we were able to create that tool, that those sets of workbooks that we use to be able to evaluate the current controls, to evaluate the current baseline of the router and firewall, be able to see, okay, where are you right now? And then use that as a tool, provide that as a tool, so that Rick and his team can continue using those into the future as part of a greater risk management tool and tracking device for those pieces of the, for tracking the firewall and router configurations and being able to move forward. It actually gives you the indication as to what exact tests you need to run on those controls, or sorry, on those devices. So that's, that's why we decided to go down that route. We also find that, again, it's a very comprehensive set of data that, you know, and in some cases, you were asking about, you know, where we said it was NA. It is somewhat subjective and, you know, and again, because you're not required to meet the compliance of the IRS and the FTI, again, being subjective, we decided to say that some of these may not be applicable completely to you folks. So if there's questions about that, if you think we would, you would want us to test further, then we can certainly talk about that.
So a few questions, and these may go more to Rick. I think that's a fair answer. I just, I'm not aware of any control framework or risk assessment methodology that's specifically applicable to schools, so I know it's a little bit of a tough situation. I wasn't sure if you guys would be. Apparently, there isn't such one that you're aware of. One of the things that I read, I skimmed through the report, but I didn't have yet the time to read all sixty-five pages. The, did you do a specific review of secure configurations of desktops and servers? I saw some configuration management controls, but I didn't see anything, see anything associated particularly with secure configuration of devices connected to the network.
So that is based on the scope of the project. We scoped it to just the network devices and the network itself. And when I say network devices, we're talking about the network infrastructure devices, so firewall, routers, switches, sorts of things.
Okay.
Did not go as far as servers and desktops.
Okay. I mean, the, well, you, some of the controls you looked at, looked at anti-malware controls on servers and desktops. So I was thinking less about whether the secure configurations were right, but whether there was a secure configuration control. And I'm almost positive there is for student desktops, that you use a gold standard and that that's configured in some way to be secure, but that's actually one of the things that I would consider most important. And by the way, I'd second the positive things you had to say about Rick and team. I've been very impressed with the whole team every chance I've had to work with them, so I'm quite pleased. The second thing, the second thing I wanted to ask specifically about was, you indicated that FCCPS does NESAs scans every six months. So is that an internal network infrastructure-only scan, or is it a, you know, are you scanning for, I just, I'd like to know what you're scanning for.
Just throughout the, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, just through the internal components of our IP system, it's inside the firewall. We haven't gone outside with any scans or from the outside. So it's all the devices on the network at each building.
Okay. So do you do, is it an infrastructure scan? Is it a dynamic or static application security scan, or what's the-
Take an IP address range and just throw the whole scan-
Okay.
And then review each and every one of them.
Okay.
I mean, servers are really what shows up. Some of the switches are pretty basic, generic configurations, but, yeah.
So, I mean, just as a, as a, things I'd like to see, I'd like to see monthly scans at the very least, and if possible, if you have, if you use an external vendor, I know you don't with NESAs, you do it yourself-
Right.
But you'd want to do continuous scans. And I do external scans, certainly for both infrastructure and web application, and infrastructure for internal scans. The, but I think every six months is way too infrequent. I had, I wasn't clear from reading the report what the vulnera, not the vulnerability, what the incident monitoring processes were. And one of the reports said, it's unclear how reporting is performed. So you've got an IDS, you've got Barracuda, you've got a bunch of, you have a, well, firewall, FireEye is, are you using FireEye for mail and web or just web?
Mail.
Email.
Email. Well, it's any, it's, there's a specific part that we can get from FireEye, but no, we don't use it for email.
Okay. So you're using FireEye for an IDS. How are alerts generated by your various security devices and who monitors those? Because it didn't sound like Barry Dunn figured that out.
Usually, they have the report. Whenever we've got an incident, they're going to send out a report to the whole team, say that what's happening and then what IP address that create those report, and I would look into those reports and see, and then we're going to block those IP or we're going to get those machines back or updated, so it's depending on the incident. So every time it happens, it's alert, it sends us an alert.
So it's configured by email?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a lot on event management from the Orion Sullivan as well, so every time that someone access, there's a lot and things like that on the server or on the switches, core router ASA, they immediately send us the alert.
And that was one of the reasons we went with FireEye, it wasn't as noisy, because we are a small team, so trying not to get ten messages of the same type that FireEye has the ability to filter out a lot of that and give us the real important information that we need. And we all get it, all of us on our team.
I don't, I-
That's not enough, I know. I know it's not enough.
I don't, I don't want to sort of, this is something I am obviously a lot more concerned about than most other people would be. But, and I don't want to spend a lot of board time kind of going through this, but it probably would be helpful if I could have a separate sit-down session with you at some time, Rick. The, you know, the things, the three of the things that I'd be particularly concerned about based on reading the report are configuration management, more rapid scanning of systems, and timelines for remediation of vulnerabilities. For example, I didn't see anything about how long you take to apply patches when they are released, and that's something, you know, if you're running on a six-month schedule and you're waiting for your NESAs scans to tell you you've got to patch something, then you're going to be in trouble. And then the methodology for monitoring, as you know, I've been a proponent for a while of having an additional person on your team dedicated to security and security monitoring. That's not possible from a budget perspective right now, but those are sort of three of the things that I'd specifically like to kind of go through with you if it doesn't violate any sort of, of the school board rules, because I think, I think we could not, we don't need to go through all of it, but it's, it's a helpful report. The one thing I'd add, Dr. Jones, is that the school board work plan actually said an Internet safety and security assessment. This is dedicated solely to the security part and not the safety part. So the work plan has another big element in it of examining Internet safety-related controls, so.
Yeah. And I might have said, we, you know, we talked a lot about what to include with the budget that we had, knowing that after this first meeting, that if we want to come back in the work plan this year and do another step in this fiscal year, that we could come back and do that, so.
Well, first of all, are there any other questions, Mr. Reddinger?
So I think my question, one of the questions I was going to ask has just been answered, and I defer to Phil on that, but my thing was when Rick gave his initial assessment a few months ago before requesting, when we were talking about this, there was the issue of backup, and I noticed all, like, basically that the backup to the system is still on the school premises, and there was talk of moving it offsite so that in the event of some disaster, it's removed sort of enough, and I didn't see that in the report, just like Phil, I skimmed it, and I didn't see that. But, but Phil's just confirmed, and I guess from the conversations we've had, it's obvious that the scope was limited, because that was the first thing I put here, that this didn't seem as comprehensive as we were expecting. But again, to the issue of budget, at least we've got this part done, so with Phil's help and guidance, we can look at what else needs to be done. My other question goes to Barry Dunn about the compliant, noncompliant, or partially compliant. Those are sort of, I don't want to call them sort of checkboxes, but could you go, could that be, could you overlay that with sort of low-risk, medium-risk, high-risk? And let me give you very basic examples that folks would understand. My front door has a lock, but should it, do we need a deadbolt to feel safer? That's what I mean by, you know, low-risk, high-risk. Or, you know, you've got a password, and sometimes a password will tell you, this password isn't very secure, or this password is more secure than that. So that sort of thing with, with all the results that you, with your compliant, noncompliant, you know, it's great, the door's shut, we turn on the alarm and go into bed, but are there other vulnerabilities that we should be aware of? Is it a low risk, is it a high risk? And I don't know if you could overlay that with some of your findings to give us a better comfort level with where we are with a lot of the stuff that you talked about, so.
Yeah, I think, I think, Gary, that's something we can do is add a criticality.
Other questions, comments? Well, I do think that we've started something here, but that we need to keep going on it because, you know, I think security of the network, we did have an unfortunate event a few years ago at George Mason that had serious operational impacts. There's the safety. I think there's an additional layer here where I think some of our greatest threats come from our end users in George Mason High School. And so I think also, I hate the word best practice, but from a governance standpoint, it's increasingly the case that this is a board-level responsibility, and we as a board should get smarter about this and we should look at this. And I also, one of the notes I wrote was, you know, what are the resource impacts of this? Are we, is going to, monthly scans going to get us across the finish line, or are we going to need to do more? I continue to not feel as if we can articulate what the top three things that keep us up at night are and what we plan to do about them, and I think we need to be better about that. So what I would suggest is that we, you know, by all means, I think we should take advantage of your knowledge, Mr. Reddinger, but I also think we as a board need to own this issue collectively and continue to push it forward because we've started, but I don't think we're there yet. So with that in mind, let's, let's keep working this, and, you know, I think it is important to note that we are, we are doing pretty well, and we're not perfect, and we always keep doing better, and we need to keep striving to do that. So does that, does that work for everyone? Is that something that there's interest in continuing to push? And I also think, you know, one of the best practice, I said it, is that, you know, we probably should revisit this issue at least every six months, if not quarterly, and stay on top of this. So with that in mind, what are we going to be doing next? What's our, what are our next steps here? You guys are going to work on the criticalities, right, a little bit?
Yep. We can update that and then provide a, you know, updated version of the report and, you know-
I think it would be interesting, I'm sorry to interrupt, but one thing before I forget was, I think it would be interesting to see the net scorecard after you throw out the NAs, because I'm not sure why you count things that don't count in the statistics. So, and, and I guess the last thing I would think about is, it strikes me that this was a bit of a missed opportunity from the general government standpoint, that we could, as a, as a city, do a better job across the board. I don't know if we could still have a chance to pick that opportunity up a bit and do a collective look at security.
Yeah, they're kind of a totally different world than we are, and very, very different. And so we wouldn't, we, I mean, we've talked about that, but we would not do one together if, I mean, if, Rick, you can address that, but.
They're two separate networks and different types, different teams.
Different users.
Users, user environments, similar hardware in a lot of places, but with the, especially with the wireless community, the mobile community we have, so huge, and they don't have that over there. They've got police department, we don't, and they've got tax records, we don't, we have student data, so there's a lot of different, you know, that data ownership, we know what our value targets are. They've got different ones than we do, but we do, we do things similarly.
But just, you know, just to increase efficiencies, I mean, I think there are some staffing imbalances between the two bodies that could be rationalized with more efficiency, and that's all to the good. So I, you're right, maybe there are two separate setups, but if you guys are willing to do a two-for-one kind of deal, maybe we can help our colleagues in general government.
We've always wanted to work with, and we have a lot in the past. We have heavy workload here, so we focus really hard on what we have. It's, a lot of times, it's not, well, it's on the wish list to be able to work together more in different ways, resources.
Okay, well, maybe then in the next-
Always looking for better ways.
Next iteration?
Maybe in about four to six weeks, we can reconvene and talk about this after, before the budget stuff gets going and after our work plan gets set up.
Yeah, we can, but I have to tell you, I'm not really sure what you're asking.
Well, I think we need to-
I don't know what the board's really wanting, actually.
Well, I think we have the issue of, you know, there's the, there's the network assessment that we've just had, there's Internet safety. I think, you know, the, I think the question isn't really where we start, but where we stop. I mean, is training sufficient? You know, the social engineering is a huge vector, so if the network's nailed down and people are taking the Prince of Nigeria up on the offer, have we really addressed what we need to address? So I think maybe what we need to do is have a work session again for a discussion from Mr. Chowes and his team about where things are. You know, we, this didn't include a discussion of desk- You know, we, this didn't include a discussion of desktops and other network endpoints. There's the wireless component of this. So, I think maybe we need to figure out, sit down, have another meeting, and figure out what are our priorities and what do we want to do so that we have a comfort level about this. Mr. Redding?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I just asked a couple of things. One, as Mr. Ankuma's question points out, while there's a lot of risk-related terminology in the report, it really is a compliance assessment as opposed to, since there's no risk ratings right now, an indication of what the highest-risk actions are. But I would think that it would be a good thing for Mr. Dowers and company to take a look at the remaining findings and come up with, you know, what amounts to an audit remediation plan where each of the findings, you know, it's either, the point you want to get to is, are we accepting the risk or can we do more to mitigate the risk? And so, you know, sort of an understanding about what it's practicable to get done for each of those pieces, including increasing scans, and, you know, sort of presenting what the six-month, the one-year response plan is to work on them. And so, we know as a board what risks we're willing to accept or not accept, including throwing more resources at it, or at least prioritizing. And that would be a good thing to look at in a work plan. The other thing I think that we would want to do is use some very high-level framework to look at the things that were outside of the scope of the Barry Dunn audit. I'd suggest that we might want to look, at least on the security side, at the CIS 20 critical security controls, because it gets you down to a reasonable number. And it points out some of the things that we're a little short on, like inventories right now. And, you know, the first two of those 20 controls are inventory-related, one for hardware and one for software. And those, that sort of gets you to an immediate level of prioritization. And, you know, the whole point is that, you know, the network better than we are, we ought to be the ones to accept the risk. But, you know, we need to know what all of the risks are so we can say, you need to get more resources, or we accept the risk if we can't transfer it or mitigate it in some way. So, I just think, I agree with the chairman's notion that we ought to keep this up regularly. It is a board-level decision increasingly in the private sector and in the government sector as well. So, it's just, it's going to take a little while before we get to the, I think, that position. But this is, I think, a very good start.
Okay.
Yep.
We're really focused on it and doing absolutely the best we can. It is, it is hard with the workloads we have, everyone knows that. If that goes around the table, everyone's workload is heavy. We wish we could do more.
And that's why, just, that's why I think the risk focus is so important, because you can't do everything, right? And so, if generating a full inventory is going to take three people, and, you know, then maybe we can, you could use those three people better. But, you know, I think we need to hear a little bit from you about where you think the most way to assign your assets are, since you know the network and the risks probably a lot better than we do.
Yeah, so, thank you all for all you do, and, you know, let's keep working on this and do even better, so.
Oh, yeah, sure.
All right, well, thank you, all of you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And so, now we find ourselves slightly ahead of schedule.
No, behind.
Well, no, 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 okay, it's all right.
Only 30 minutes.
Yes, okay, so next we are now at the school board self-evaluation.
Okay, so, should I slide up there? Do you guys want to see this PowerPoint on the big screen? Or do you just want to look at it on your computers?
What's that?
Whatever you would like.
Do you want it up there?
I can plug it in, yeah, I'll make it, I'll make it quick. It won't take too long. And I can show you the documents in case anybody else wants to see them. What's the deal here? How do I get connected? Oh, I have to. Well, here we go, we're in luck.
It's the job, I was sure.
I want it to, my documents on there, it's going to do a presentation.
Oh.
Can I connect? Yeah, can I connect?
Okay, let's get you connected here. Actually, hi would be good, but where's hi? He's so fast.
So.
It's not you on the beach?
I wish. I'm trying to present the PowerPoint and the documents I have up here. So, these are the documents here, and the PowerPoint's down here. Is there a way to connect to this? Oh, sure.
Who play soccer on Wednesdays?
I really am. I'm watching this right here. Because I know what, what do we do?
I find myself being in goal. That's what I'm better at, protecting the goal.
Yeah.
Not using our hands because our nets are certain size.
I'm trying to picture.
It's about, yeah, it's about chest high.
Oh, okay.
But not too wide.
Yeah.
So, it's those foldable type.
There it is.
But I find these other guys on Wednesdays.
He's up there.
And they all want to play.
They want to play, they want to be goalie?
No, no, no. Others want to be goalie.
Right.
So, I get a chance to play.
Yeah.
And my word, it's such a difference. I am dripping and holding my breath and going, after a couple of runs, I'm going, phew. That was, and then they start again. It never stops.
How lucky am I?
Happening to stop. So, I'm going to say, you like this? I remember my sucks, because I might have to play tomorrow again.
Oh, it's so hot. Thank you so much, Rick.
It's really hard to run right now. Yeah, no, it'll be easier this.
Yes, it comes up.
I know it's really hard to run.
After I have 2:15 minutes, I'm dripping every shot.
No, it's miserable.
Oh, it's miserable. And I'm not sure tomorrow is going to be any better, because tomorrow's supposed to be the start of the heat wave.
Yeah, it's going to be bad. I'm running at 6:00 tomorrow.
Like downloading stuff.
To try to beat it. And on Sunday, it's supposed to be like 99, it's a little over 80, it's around 11:00.
It's like, when I sit in the car in the morning, I'm going, it's 84. It's going to be like, eat, eat.
No, I've been going to the gym and running to the gym. I've been driving to the gym. Because it's so hot. I ran this morning. But it was crazy now, there were so many people out, because everyone's playing Pokemon Go. The trail is hacked with people.
What, does Pokemon go on the trail?
It is on the trail, because I'm doing it for my kids, I'm doing it too. So, I was hatching an egg for my kids this morning while running.
People need to get a life, what's with this virtual thing? I mean, I still don't understand.
I thought my kids are out there, they want to go out for walks all day.
You find them when you're riding?
A Windows phone is completely Pokemon Go-free. There are no apps for it.
I have Pokemon, I have Pokemon Go, but I have, my kids are only allowed to do it if we are walking somewhere.
Yeah.
So, my son cannot just sit in our house and wait for a Pokemon to show up. I was like, we have to go for walks. And if you find someone walking, then you can catch them. But I do find them by runs, which is like, it's fun on the runs.
How does that thing work? It's fascinating.
You like, go by, I don't know, I really don't know. Like, I don't know how to, like, catch them and how to get a cookie stop. So, I don't know how to do anything else.
All right, so, we're ready to go, if you guys want to.
Okay, guys, here we go.
Chair.
School board evaluation.
Okay, this is sort of like preaching to the choir, because I think we're all on board on this, no pun intended. But I'm going to go ahead and go through this, just to make it formal. And then I'll show you some doc, the documents that are actually on board docs. Thank you, Marty, that we can just go through. This is just an initial presentation to see where you all, how you all feel, what kind of direction you want to go as far as self-evaluation. But let me go through the PowerPoint, and then we can talk. Instructions in this. So, okay. So, the role of the school board, the culture of an organization is set at the top. So, our organization is Falls Church City Public Schools, and we set the culture for those, for our school system. We all know that boards must be effective leaders to not only meet the daily challenges, but those challenges faced by public education today across the country. To be effective in any job, any job you do. You really need to take time to reflect not only on your performance, but how you address those challenges that we face daily. Bottom line is, what we're doing is in the best interest of the students, and we have to keep our focus on the students first. So, why self-evaluate? Reflection's always good. Reflection on your work, on everything you do daily, you should be reflecting. But particularly an organization such as a school board, we really should be reflecting on how we're doing our job and really taking a good, hard look at how we handle things and how we want to be. We have to have that focus. So, self-evaluation, self-evaluation provides a starting point for our effective goal-setting and our long-range planning. In addition to helping us reflect, it also provides valuable information, and it opens discussion and communication amongst, among board members that we might, on topics we might not otherwise bring up. We hold the school board accountable to ourselves, our staff, the school staff, and the community. Again, again, talking about reflection, I'm being redundant a little bit. But we really need to look not only at our performance as a school board, but on what we as school board members do individually to make sure we are working in the best interest of the schools, the students, and our fellow board members. Self-evaluation also fosters open, more open communication among board members. I think we all pretty much feel we can talk to each other, but there might be certain things that maybe we don't feel so comfortable broaching. So, the self-evaluation will force us into addressing those things that we like keep, keeping under the rug, that we really should talk about. And additionally, it helps resolve differences of opinion. We don't always agree, and when you have a self-evaluation, you open lines of communication, we have discussions that help us see the other person's point of view. And that is always a healthy thing. It improves decision-making. We all have a common understanding of our philosophies and goals. We make sure we're all on the same page. That way, we're not all moving in different directions. It also helps us identify our strengths and weaknesses, not, again, individually and as a board. We all have room for improvement, and this is a great starting point for helping us get on that trajectory to, to boards' improvement. Also, one of the things that I really liked, when I really looked into self-evaluation, I never really thought of this aspect of it, but as new board members cycle into the board, it really gives them an opportunity to understand the board processes. So, if we evaluate several times a year and new members are part of that process, it actually functions as a, almost like a, an education for the new board members and helps them learn about who we are and how we operate. So, self-evaluation, as I said, is a great starting point. And really, truly, you know, we have to start somewhere. You can't just go out and have this fabulous board evaluation. We have to start with self-evaluation. And as we become comfortable with that process, it would be advantageous to add staff, parents, students, and the community to provide feedback. So, we don't always know what we, how we are perceived, and it's always nice to get that feedback so we can, you know, we can continue improving. So, that's pretty much it. The investment in the process will pay big dividends in the long run. I want to apologize for my hokey pictures, but I'm not that really good at this. I mean, at, for this type of thing. If it was, if it was biology, I'd be really good at it. Okay, so, let me see if I can get back to where I need to be. I just want to show you the different documents that I found. Let me show you this first one. Okay. So, my research, I found different, oh, that goes again. Oh, that was true, I thought I did something wrong.
I'm not going to change you as much.
Sure, yeah, now I'm going to be drawing the documents. That's okay. Good, okay. So, this, I don't know if anybody had a chance to look through it, but this is Montgomery County, Maryland, Board of Education self-evaluation. So, they actually have this big document, and it includes instructions and the different criteria. And then it is broken into different categories. It starts with establishing and promulgating the vision and values of the district. And then it goes on to developing and promulgating relevant governing policies. So, they're two big areas of the board. The other one is monitor expected student achievement results, management of resources, and, you know, then the community engagement and communication. This is a big one that I think we would like to really explore. I think a lot of us do, a lot of community outreach. But I'd like to, I think it would be advantageous to us to maybe even be better at that, including the communication aspect. And then there's, there's an area on board operations about work sessions and effectiveness at reaching conclusions and decisions. And this is a very, this is the most detailed one. There's also one from Oregon school, school districts. I think this is Oregon State, yeah. So, this is another one that's sort of in-depth. But again, it gives you the different parameters and, as well as the standards and instructions. And this is very similar to Montgomery County form. And I'm just going to page through it fast, because it's really redundant. But it goes in, again, to community relations, cultural responsiveness and educational equity, accountability and performance monitoring, our meetings, how they are conducted, communications, again, just little broader categories. Board and staff relations. Board superintendent relations. And then the self-evaluation. And just, you know, there's just various categories. I just don't want to bore everybody with these. I mean, you could look at them at your leisure. Then the other one I found was, this is very simple. I actually went to a, it's V S B A, one of the conferences, and they, one of our, our choices in these, in these small groups was self-evaluation. And actually, this is the document they gave me. This is a lot more simple. It has, you know, it's a number system, so you get to circle a number, and it just asks questions. It's very basic, it's not even two full pages. And then the other was, this one is also a very simple one from National School Board Association. And again, these are simple questions, one to four rating scale. And this is very brief. The last thing I wanted to mention, I did contact V S B A and see if they had anything, any kind of training for us, if we wanted, if we wanted training. And this is what, this is the flyer they sent me, and they do have a self-evaluation class. Unfortunately, it costs money, and I know our schools are strapped right now. So, I just, I just, like, in the interest of full disclosure, I just wanted to show you that this was there. This is actually, it's costly, I think it runs about $1,000. And it requires us to go to them, and the entire school board has to be present. So, it could be a little unwieldy. But, I mean, that might be something we could consider maybe, you know, in the future. If there's, you know, maybe next year's budget, we might have a little money to fund that. I don't know what exactly is available right now for us. I don't know if we want to spend our money on something like this, when we could probably do it on our own, at least initially, and see where we go. At least get our, you know, get our feet wet and get, you know, get a feel for how we want to. to proceed. So I would, you know, I'd like to get everyone's input. I'm happy to design a form, but I'm not sure what, you know, what you all are looking for. Do you want the simple form? Do you want the more in-depth form? Do you are there are there categories on there that you'd like to see included that aren't included? So if, you know, this will require you all have to read it, read the four documents, and and let me know what you want to do. And I'm happy to draft something. Anybody?
Mr. Incum.
So I have a few questions. I'm on the fence on this one. What is driving this? And the questions I put, the words I put here, is this voluntary? Is this involuntary? What are the metrics or how do you measure? What's the methodology? Or what will be the methodology? And are we looking, what kind of additional layer of admin process bureaucracy are we adding by doing this?
Okay, could you like ask one at a time? Because I can't remember all those. Okay, what was the first one, Michael?
Voluntary or involuntary?
Well, this is voluntary. And I think this is something that we've talked about. And I think, like I said in the presentation, it's more about, you know, introspection and seeing where we are. You know, we operate as a body. We operate as one. But yet, we're maybe not necessarily all on the same page. Maybe we're not, not that we're trying to be, you know, contrary. It's just that we, you know, we're individuals operating as one, and that's difficult. And I think when you when you start this reflective process and you really think about what we're trying to accomplish and how we go about accomplishing it, you'll find that we're all on the same page, but we don't mind approach it differently. So this is a way for us to learn about each other, our ways of thinking, and our ways to be more well-oiled machine.
So we have to agree as one to want to do this?
Well, I think, I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman. How does that work?
I think I'll give my two cents. I think the unexamined board is not worth convening. I think we do need to do something like this. And I think we should, but yet, I think we should all want to do it. I think if if three people think this is a great idea and four people think it's not, then I'm not sure it's worth the candle. But I think, speaking for myself, I have had some concerns about how our board is functioning. I have reached out to Gina Patterson. I mean, I, that's why we did our governance training. And I've reached out to Gina Patterson to have a follow-up, because I think there are things that we need to continue to work on. And I think the problem is, it would be nice to think that this would happen just organically. But I think one of the challenges that we face is, for example, with with the open meeting rules and the electronic meeting rules, and the fact that even though we meet a lot, we don't meet every single, you know, it's not like a workplace environment. Building a cohesion amongst the seven of us is something that I think has to be a purposeful exercise, something that we actually are realizing we are getting to a certain point. I think the concept of governance is extremely difficult for people to understand and hold on to, because it means figuring out what you're supposed to do as well as what you're not supposed to do. And sometimes not doing something is very difficult because you really want to do it, but you shouldn't. And I don't think if we don't talk about what it is we want from ourselves as a body, we will not get there. So having said all that, I would rephrase some of your questions to say, so how in the world do you get this going? Because some, and I suppose what we would, my initial thought as I was sitting here thinking about it is, should we do some sort of, you know, school board Myers-Briggs test to figure out where where are we? Do we have gaps? Or do half of us say X and the other half say Y? Are there things that we think, are there areas of consensus where we all say, gee, we need to really shore this up? So maybe we need to do some kind of initial assessment of ourselves as a body? And then that might lead the way forward to next steps. I think, you know, but but then there's also the, where are we now? And then I think the equally important thing is, where do we want to be? And how do we want to do that as a body?
I think, yeah, I like I like your thought about the Myers-Briggs. I think we're all here for the same reason. We all care about the schools. We all want, we care about the kids. We care about this community. We all have the the same, you know, goal. But we definitely, we go about it differently, which is great, which is wonderful, because we're all different, and we want to reflect our personalities in in what we do. But at the same time, we all want to make sure, you know, we're all kind of walking a very similar path, because it's easy to, you know, take something the wrong way by somebody, someone says something or does something. And and we really have to, you know, we don't have to be like best buddies and go to everyone's house once a week for dinner. But I think it's good for good for us to get to know each other better. I think it's good for us to get to know the way we think. And it's it's good for us to to just have that more open communication. I think when you feel more comfortable with people, you're more willing to open up. And that truthfully, to really accomplish anything in life, in in the school board anywhere, you have to be able, be comfortable opening up to your, you know, your colleagues. And I think a school board evaluation is one step in that direction. And I really like, you know, I went through that PowerPoint really fast, because I really didn't think I had to dwell on it that much. Like, I think that we all kind of agree where we are and who we are and where we want to be and what we want to accomplish. But, you know, getting there, we take that first step. It's always hard to take that first step. All right? Nobody wants to, it's hard to look at yourself, whether as a member of a board or just an individual. It's hard to take, it's hard to take an evaluative look at yourself. It's not a pleasant thing, but it's one step to helping you grow. And one, it's like a birthing pain. You get through it, and now you can grow. And I I feel very strongly about this, and I really like to get some things started, even if it's we start simple. We start with one of those little checklist-type evaluation forms to open up discussion. And I mean, we can always, you know, refine this process as we go forward. And we can add on to it as we go forward, but we have to start somewhere. And I'd like to start small, so as not to overwhelm. And I'm hoping you're all on the same page. And I'm more than welcome your comments, your suggestions. And I'm happy to draft up, you know, based on what you all all like, I will draft draft up the first evaluation summary, and we can rather checklist, and we can go from there. And I could do that, and we can look at it as a group and say, oh, no, I don't want this, or we need to move this here, you know, just some, going to start somewhere. But I don't want to take to be so presumptive that I was going to design something without your input. So I would like your input, and I would be happy to do the legwork.
Mr. Reidinger?
First, Margaret, thank you very much. I think that's really helpful. I have a sense, I think, of where Michael is coming from. I don't mean to put words in his mouth, but I think a lot of us spend so much more time in this room, there may be a little bit of pulling back at the notion, we're going to sit around and examine ourselves. All that said, I think we do have to engage in self-examination. We've got to do process improvement, or we're not going to get any better. We have, you know, their teachers have evaluation criteria. The superintendent has a bunch of evaluation criteria. We need to figure out how we're going to evaluate ourselves, because, you know, other than the voters, there's no real means for that. And that's, you know, once every four years. So it's a pretty poor feedback mechanism. I do, however, have a little bit of a, I think self-evaluations or reflections have a point. I think they are best when they are extremely simple. Because I think the big thing they do is give you an opportunity to open a conversation. And a 10-page form where everybody, you know, engages in a reflection chamber and looks at each other doesn't add anything generally to a one or a one and a half page form. I think I'd start with the notion of, you know, what are the few simple things that we want to evaluate ourselves on? So what are our criterias for success? And then design both a a very, very simple self-reflection form that could be a means for us to discuss where we think we are and how we might improve. And then I would, I mean, I'd actually move very rapidly beyond that to say, what does the data say? Because I'm happy to have the conversation started, but I really want to know what the data says. And, you know, I think we need to look specifically at where we can pull data from the recent professional survey we did to say, what does this tell us about how we're doing? And we ought to come up with performance targets. So if we repeat that next year, you know, we want, instead of 35% of teachers saying they have an input into the budget process, we want it to be 55% for the next year. So we we go out there and we, you know, execute our community engagement and teacher engagement strategies with an eye towards increasing our score. And I think we need to build survey instruments or otherwise so that we can actually get real data. Because it's very easy for all of us in this room, among seven of us, to say, yes, we're doing a wonderful job. Or, you know, we're doing a wonderful job except for, you know, Phil.
Wow, that was going to be my comment.
By the way, I'll confess, I'm an INTJ. I will pretty much always be an INTJ, and I welcome everyone to share their Myers-Briggs personality with me. Hunter and I are both INTJs, so we're happy living in that space.
I'm totally on that same page as you, Phil, but I don't, I want to start small. I don't want to be, I don't want this to be an overwhelming thing initially. This, I envision starting small and and having these conversations with our fellow board members and and really talking about what we feel like where we need, we need, might need help in developing in a certain area, or, you know, we feel as a board, we need to develop in a certain area. I think that's an initial, it's initial, like I said in my PowerPoint, this is only a starting place. I do want to add on to that, because to really be fully meaningful, you really need to get input from, you know, all sources that all of the, you know, all of our stakeholders, we really need to get input from. And, you know, so that, I think that should be, you know, added on gradually.
I don't disagree with you, Margaret. I'd say, I'd say part of the initial thing ought to have at least one or two clear data elements where we want to improve on it. And even if they're, even if they're ad hoc examinations, I think it's useful to target a couple of data elements that we want to improve.
Oh, sure, sure. No, no, that's actually good. We need talking points for this. I mean, we can't just sit around and go, um, yeah, all right, well, what do you say? No, we need, we need something, someplace to start. And I believe that that is a, an excellent place. So if you have any suggestions like that, please, please email them to me, so I can have everything in written form, and I can consolidate it and, you know, create something from that. But if you have something special you'd like to address.
I'll look through the survey instrument and see if there, the one, if there are any of them that I think, besides the inclusiveness in budget, that would reflect on school board policies that we could use as data.
Oh, we do one on this. And then, you know, we do have to tie it back into our vision and mission statement. I mean, that also would be a talking point, as well as, you know, student performance and all, you know, the big, the big items. And then start there, and then we go from there. And hopefully, just, you know, just become fabulous.
Let me just jump in. I think there are two tasks there. I think there's the what, and there's the how. I view the self-evaluation much more, at least at this stage, as a how. Is this a happy ship? Are we working well together? And once we get our house in order, do we then, then I think we'll be in a better position to say, here's what we want to do. Here's what we want to accomplish. And, you know, obviously, achieving results is rewarding and motivating. But I think some of this is a kind of, as I said, how are we doing, not what are we doing? How are we doing? Are we working well? Then, you know, then, and I think trying to kick something like this off now dovetails with our work plan, the beginning of the school year, and so on and so forth. So I agree, starting small is a good way to go. I think moving quickly thereafter is also good. But other thoughts?
Okay. Yeah, so I'll be brief. I just think, I think we should begin with the end in mind. We should have an outcome, because we need to have a, where, what's the outcome of this? We should develop some metrics that we are going to try to meet. And there's, this should be a means to an end, not just an open discussion. I like this format.
This is why I picked that. This is when I like to.
Cut back maybe a bit, because I think it's pretty long. But cut it down and maybe not, you know, just do the four sections, not zero through 10. Take that, see where everybody is, and then go from there and say, okay, where are we strongly agreeing and where are we strongly disagreeing? And then that starts, and then I think we should have a public evaluation of our work. I do think it's important that the public weighs in. And that we should do this annually. So if we're going to say we're going to do it, we should also come up with when we're going to do it, we're going to do it every year.
Yeah, I actually envisioned doing the smaller one twice a year. I know it might sound like a lot, but I think the more often we do, look, take that reflective time, it's sort of like, you know, going on a, I don't know, going on a vacation, you know, just like taking time to just take time to think about your life and things that you're doing. A retreat, I guess, of sorts. Now, I definitely, I definitely like this form, because it's really simple and to the point, and they are talking points. It's not like we're going to go, oh, okay, I think we get an eight, I get a seven. That opens up the communication, and we can start talking. And as far as, like, the end in mind, I'm not sure. Like, the end in mind, to me, is just, is it, it's a process. I don't really see it, see that there's like a goal we're going to reach. I see ultimately, we want to improve. Ultimately, we want to improve our communications with each other. Ultimately, we want to improve our performance. But I don't like necessarily, oh, we want, we want.
That's a goal.
Okay, okay. But I mean, that's like, it's an ongoing thing. It's always like, you can never reach that goal. As far as I'm concerned, you can never be too perfect. And so, just saying, because I'm still working on it. So so to me, I don't think of that as a goal. I think of it as more of a, as a process. I think we have our mission, mission and vision statements and those things that we strive for. But, I mean, this self-evaluation, I don't want it to be, at least me personally, I'm not speaking for everyone else, I don't want it to be something like, okay, so we're going to get, you know, accomplish this in this time. Are we going, this is more, right now, it's more about how we function individually and as a board. As time goes on, we can refine it, we can change it. But I don't want to be, I don't want to overwhelm everyone with like, oh, we got to do this, and we got to do that. I just want, I want to open lines of communication. That's what I want. I want us all to be comfortable with each other, comfortable, you know, being critical and comfortable taking criticism. Because we we agree, you know, when we all know, we all feel that we all are working towards the same thing, we all feel we're on the same page, and we don't have like these hidden agendas, we are going to be much better communicators. And you mentioned metrics, Michael. What do you mean by that? Like, how we're going to measure this?
So long as, do you want to speak, and then I'll.
Because I know you guys over there are concerned about.
Here's what I've put down. On the voluntary involuntary, I put why. On the metrics, I put what. On the methodology, I put how. And on the added layer of administration, I've got who. And on the who, I'm asking, one minute we're talking about a self-evaluation, the next minute we're talking about staff, parents, students, community. I, you know, I'm, again, I'm on the fence on this one, but I'm, I would be, objectivity is is important to me. So, so, yes, I hear you talk about an ongoing process, but I hope it is set up with specific achievable targets that can be met in the frame, in the timeframe that these will be met. So I'm not against the idea, but to to Aaron's point, I would want to see laid out to the point where you can see from start to finish, and it's not something that we're sort of muddling through. It's just, if you know what I mean.
I totally got what you're saying.
I want it laid out, I want to see from start to finish. And then, and then I'll pass judgment, or at least then maybe I'll be sold.
So here's what, I was, this, Michael, take a look at these questions. Okay? Now, if you read these, it's just asking, do we feel we do this? Do we review our district's mission statement? Do we recognize the superintendent as the chief executive officer and educational leader of the district? Do we spend time at board meetings or discussions about values of the district? These are questions we're asking ourselves, as well. These are questions we're asking ourselves as well as, you know, some of them are as the entire group. So, you know, these are not, it's not about like, are we going to, you know, are we going to have our ESAL, you know, students at 90% by 2020? It's not about that. That's what we do as, in our work as a school board. This is evaluation, self-evaluation. And like I said, it will eventually, initially, I want to start small. We've got to start simple. We will move from there, we'll expand as we feel comfortable with the first step. You know, you don't learn to swim by jumping in the 10-foot deep water, okay? You got to start in the baby pool, all right? And that's sort of where I'm going here with that.
So.
I'm sorry, Justin.
I'm mindful of the time. You know, I, I think we have a work plan. The work plan will define what we do. We have that. To, to keep moving, I don't want to cut things off, but this document here, this is from the V S B A meeting?
This is the N S B A, I believe.
Okay.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, this is, no, this is from the V S B A, yeah, this is why I got it.
Would you all be open to doing this kind of surveys as a, as a baby step so that we can sort of take our temperature and we'll, we'll have some data? You know, the only, my, my view is the data, there are seven data points for this exercise of school board self-evaluation. There will be other things that are not our self-evaluation, but, you know, this is sort of like, how is our marriage doing? And would, are you all open to preparing this and giving it to Margaret? And then we'll see where this, where we go from here?
Yeah, just like, we can use this as our template, you know, to start with.
I, I might just take the stock document.
Yeah, I mean, if we, but I mean, there might be some things you might not necessarily want to discuss.
An open comment, feel like.
An open comment, no. No, but we will, like, these will be just, these will be conversation starters, okay? And then we'll go from there.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, do we have a time, do we, do you have a deadline when you want these? Like, do you want it back in a week, two weeks?
Um, really, it's up to the board. I mean, what do you want to do? Like, do you, I, I assume do this while I'm not in school full-time. I'm teaching summer school right now until the end of the month. August will have some more time. It, you know, but when September hits, it's, it's kind of tough.
Would, would, this isn't the kind of thing that's going to take too much burning the midnight oil. Could we, could we get it done by close of business on Friday?
Yeah.
I mean, send it out.
Fill this out or send it with comments?
Well, let's just start, I mean, this is, again, this is just kind of the initial intake.
Yeah, just so you know, this is the, this is the heading, but then there is another one from the N S B A that also is pretty simple, and you can, you know, pick and choose from those. Maybe you like some questions from one, they're pretty, they pretty much overlap, but they're worded differently, and maybe you might come up with your own wording that you feel is, you know, better. And I, just send me what you want.
Send yours out, hold it.
Send me what you want.
So, so Margaret will send out the document to everybody?
Well, they're on board docs.
Well, I mean, okay, so we have, we have a mechanical, we have a mechanical issue.
Do you, do you want me to do a different version?
I think it would help if you just sent out the one document that we're going to do so that you don't get five different surveys.
You don't want the two simple ones, and you can kind of.
One's eight pages, one's two pages.
No, 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 there are two that are eight pages, and then there's two that are two pages, and here they are.
Okay, so what's the board want to do?
There's the, here's, this is the National School Board, okay? It's broken into accountability questions, we should ask ourselves itself. And then accountability questions, we should ask superintendent and staff, and that's it. And, I'm sorry, no, there was more to that. Nope, that was it. No, 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 sorry, my lead. And then our quick assessment accountability. So that, there's five questions on that. This other document, let's see if this is the one, yeah, this one. This, it talks about being based on six dimensions of board competency, and it, it breaks it down into these questions, and there are a total of 10 on that pa, that section. Then this one is about, goes into the educational aspect. We might not want to delve into that right now. Then interpersonal, that's something I'm, I'm thinking about, like, more like this. This educational stuff, which is good, but I think initially, we should just talk about our relationships with each other and our ability to function as a board. So I, like, if it was me, I would take all this out right now. Although, no, I'm sorry, this, I, I take that back, because this talks about, about, see, that, that does talk about, this is self-education, I'm sorry, I thought it was referring to schools. So, and then there's interpersonal, analytical. There's a lot of questions on this, but, but it is, it's very simple. Like I said, you pick and choose.
But do we have to do all the sections?
Yeah.
I would just, I think, say we just do this, we just do this one.
The first one.
Oh, I don't know, the first one doesn't seem long, it doesn't seem enough. Like, I would just do this one, don't do the last one where the essay is.
As much as I hate saying it too, the V S B A one probably will be the one that actually gets us somewhere if we're going to start, even though it's a long one.
We may find.
Trust me, I don't, I don't, I'm not certain of what more, more words.
So this is, this is eight pages, full, thoughtful questions. You might say, oh, we don't need to address this, I don't think this is appropriate at this point.
That's why this, all right, this is fine, because.
How is everybody about, how's everybody with starting this? Can we, can we start with this?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. There's a mechanical issue. We have to print this out, we have to circle things.
Okay.
We have to get that to Margaret.
We can scan it back in.
Are we able to scan and send that back?
Do you want it to Margaret, do you want it to Marty?
No, I'll have to.
Can't be a fillable PDF?
Because I'll have to, I'll, I'll.
If you want to create it.
I, I'm going to work with your comments and create our, our very own personal, it'll be tailor-made to Falls Church City School Board, just saying. But this is also, this is fairly simple.
Okay, well, I think, I think we're, we're set on that one.
Yeah, that's.
That sounds good.
So, so let's get that in by close of business on Friday.
All right.
Do you want to send it to Margaret? Do you want to send it to Marty?
What's?
Do we want to put our names on it?
Do you want to do it to you?
Do we not want to put our names?
Sure, Marty will do it.
What's the point, anyway?
Just raise their hand.
Put my name on it.
I'm joking.
Well, I'm just asking.
She's going to call me, she's going to collect on it.
Okay, so it's going to.
I mean, yeah, I'm going to take their comments.
Margaret, Margaret, close of business Friday. Any other questions or thoughts? I, I don't want to stampede anybody, but I think if we start, that's the best way to get somewhere.
Yeah, so, so let's just start there, and then we'll have something. Oh, you're welcome. It was my pleasure, and I really, you know, I think it'll make us all, you are, you know, just always give me a hard time, cuts me off in traffic, saying.
I'm hearing some people say, yes, let's just do that form, and then I'm hearing some people say, let's do that form and pick and choose what we want out of that form we give to Marty.
No, I think, the V S B A one, I think we're just doing it.
All of it.
All of it.
We're just going to do it.
Because it's easier, I think, to.
It was a starting point.
It's a starting point to kind of get.
Okay, so thank you, Marty, because I, I thought you wanted me to create something unique to us. Now, you just want to start with that?
I think those questions work fine for us.
So you're looking at this one, this is eight pages.
That's fine.
Okay. And then I will take it and, you know, consolidate or collate and all that.
Throw it back and we'll, we'll, we'll move from there.
No, you don't do that, Marty.
Okay.
I volunteer for this.
Thank you again, Margaret, that's, that's, I appreciate your persistence.
Do I have, do tech people here get me off of this thing? Can I, like, say?
Okay.
Yeah, excuse me.
Embarrassing photos that'll come up as soon as I X out of that.
I'm happy to do whatever you want. It might actually be easier to consume if people just created a list of the questions and wrote the number next to it, because that could be more easily, or put it in an Excel spreadsheet, it'd just be, it'd be more easy to work with than manually going through and scanning all of the sheets.
And we do have survey software.
Well, we could, we could take the document and populate an Excel, shared Excel spreadsheet with our scores.
Yeah.
No, it's not hard. We use it all the time.
Okay, so who, who is taking the actual items?
About three or six, she's at 410, something in New Orleans, on the same street, took me two minutes to her house.
If, Mr. Webb, thank you.
Hold on, let me pull that back down. It's, it sounds like, and I'm not trying to put anything on the, on their plate, but if, being we have some survey stuff in place, if there's a way to do that, where we can just, and it's, I think the collecting of the data becomes easier cells, I would think. But if it's, I don't want to add anything to anybody's plate.
If, if Margaret sends me the form clearly that she wants to use, I'll put my answers in an Excel spreadsheet, she could just circulate the spreadsheet and everyone could just stick their numbers in, and it would be easy to just cut and paste everybody and would greatly reduce the need for scanning. I mean, I'd probably do it anyway, so I might as well defer.
I'm, I'm all about reducing the amount of.
That's fine.
Of unnecessary effort.
Yeah, I will take you up on that offer, Phil. So what I'll do, I'll, I'll send it to you right now. Now, do we, I feel like we should include our names. There's nowhere to put your name on here, but maybe some of you'd rather do it anonymously.
Well, the Excel spreadsheet will include a field for our names.
Yeah, okay, because I, I prefer that, you know, if we're going to be, you know, open and honest with each other, we got to include names, but there's nowhere on here, so.
Excellent.
Okay. All right, thank you, everyone, for listening to me join on.
All right, so we now have a closed meeting scheduled. We're running about 40 minutes behind schedule. Could we, could we move public comment before our closed meeting? If we had a motion to do that?
I move we move public comment before the closed meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Redding.
Second.
Ms. Gill is first, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so now we come to the next item on our agenda, which is public comment. I have one comment.
You got two.
No, I have two comments. The first is Melissa Dana, and in accordance with our bylaw 2.30, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and to the director.
Hi, I'm Melissa Dana, this is on, I'm at, do I need it? This is a much better venue for, for public comment than the podium with the microphone and you all on the stage. It feels more like a conversation. So, and as usual, I come thinking I'm going to talk about one thing and end up talking about something else. And as usual, I have 10 things that are really, really important to me that I want to talk about and only three minutes to talk about them, so excuse me while I speed talk. The first thing, what does it mean to be, be an inclusive community? I think this is directly tied to our budget. One of the key advantages to sending your kids to public school is so that they can experience the diversity that life has to offer in race, culture, and socioeconomic status. And this was something that was ingrained to me by my mother, who was a public school educator for 50 years. And both the school's budget and the city's budget affect this. We cannot become a community where only rich people can afford to live here. And to that end, we need to be frugal with our money and spend it wisely. We need to be able to scrutinize every penny spent, and I hope that next budget season we can do that and that the school board will address the many concerns and questions that were raised this last budget season. Number two, the school board self-evaluation. The thing I would like to see the school board address is communication. So I have attended every school board meeting except for two in the past eight months, and I'm in the dark. I don't know what you guys think about assessing instructional technology, answering budget questions, addressing the teacher survey. I have some ideas, and I don't have time to, to share them all now, but I'd be glad to share them later, but communication has got to improve if you want to see a lower level of frustration in the community. And three is the 360 review. Is the school board going to do this for Dr. Jones? And I hope that she is asking you for this as well. It's a professional development tool that high-functioning leaders and school districts want and need and use for self-improvement. I personally have been getting 360 reviews in my career for almost 20 years. You can go online and look at my patient satisfaction surveys and their scores. And then lastly is the teacher survey. I heard Phil mention a technology audit remediation plan. I would like to see a teacher satisfaction remediation plan from the school board. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next we have Rohini Winters.
Hello.
Welcome.
Rohini Winters, 324 Grove Avenue. I was moved to speak after hearing the Barry Dunn presentation, and I, I thank you for having that. I feel a little bit like Melissa Dana, that I didn't see that coming until it hit the topics from another communication tool that I'm subscribed to. And I think that you might have had a greater audience to hear some of that, because we know there's a lot of technology interest, what's happening with technology in our schools. We know that, that that's been a, a recent kind of hot topic, and so I'm curious if you could think about, in your reflective actions, how can you put that kind of interest information out more readily and more widespread when we don't have morning announcements? Because I think that's, that's been probably my best tool during the school year for kind of knowing, but it's very, if you missed it, because it's tonight, you didn't plan for it, that, that's been hard, so I had to try to figure out, how do I get advance notice on things? The school calendars don't work for me, other than the grid, to know what's going on and what the schedule is, but the, the click here for more information doesn't give you any more information on the school calendar. So as you think about how to get information out to us, I probably have a whole list of ideas, but I don't always articulate them very well. I wondered, in the Barry Dunn assessment, how much did it cost us? And then to find out that the scope was limited to about 50% of what you asked for. I challenged the school board to host a hack the network in FCCPS contest or event to save costs. I think we have, we could have a lot of registered participants to try to access the network or admin sites or other people's accounts. And as I went to the tech tour or the Naviance coming to the middle school event, I'm not sure which one it was, I had a great concern that the usernames were very manufactured and the passwords were the student lunch account numbers, which one of my kids probably knows all four of my kids' lunch account numbers and some, because they are programmed, wired in their heads to memorize visual and, and number patterns. And so that you have certain kinds of kids that will become crypto specialists, and they will test themselves. And so if you set that up as that's your Naviance account login, I think you're inviting some tomfoolery and prank-type stuff. My daughter has already experienced receiving messages in her email account from another student as if they were her friend, and she questioned the friend, did you send these to me? And they said no, and so she took that to her teacher, and they explored it and they resolved it, but it happens.
Yep.
I challenge you to identify all the incidents that are happening, and like Phil addressed, what is the incident reporting and monitoring?
Sorry, your three minutes is up, Ms. Winters.
Okay, I would just like to ask if that survey cover, if our internet network system, if our physical security relies on that same network? Because I didn't hear any discussion of the physical building locks and access.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? All right.
Justin, real, just a quick question, kind of taking off of what she, Ms. Winters was just talking about. With those passwords, I guess, if that's the generic one, because I think all of us, when we get accounts and those type of things, we, they come with that generic, but are the students then creating their own, or is it a network's, a safety issue to make it, for us to be, as a staff, being able to access those accounts on a easier basis, I guess? Because now with my network at work, you know, the username is going to be always simple, the first, last name kind of thing. But then every, that's probably six months or so, they make me, which is frustrating, because I always, I'm struggling to figure out what new passwords to put in. But do we do those type of things with those student username and password types of?
We do, but I would let Rick talk it out.
Okay, okay. And if that's something, okay.
You think six months is bad for you? One month. Nice trouble.
But yeah, if I can get just, because that makes me wonder about, after that question, just makes me wonder.
Well, I, as soon as you can sort out the password, account number, security thing, if you can do that, you'll make a lot of money, because it's.
Oh, no, I, as I said, I, the every six months, I, and then you try to change one letter or something within what you, that you remembered for all that time, and then it's like, it's too close to what you used before, and I'm like, I know, it's always tells me that, and I can't do it. I'm like, oh my goodness. So I'm trying, because it's trying to, it almost makes me wonder, I have to, let me put all these different passwords I have for all these different things down, because I'm not going to remember them all, because I try not to use the same password for everything that has to have a password, which you probably tell me, that was a good thing to do.
Okay. Now we come to our next item on our agenda, which is our closed meeting. Would somebody move us into closed? Okay, would somebody move us back into open session?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ms. Gill. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Somebody want to certify the closed meeting, please?
Do that. Mr. Chair, whereas the Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance to the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711, Section B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies; and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Ankuma. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riedinger. Mr. Kimball, would you call the roll?
Absolutely. Mr. Ankuma.
Aye.
Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Ms. Gill.
Aye.
Mr. Reiger.
Yes.
Ms. Ward.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now we come to the consent agenda, which I suppose is item seven of the amended agenda, and would seek unanimous consent to adopt the consent agenda. Seeing no objection, so ordered. Now we come to business items, and the first item on the agenda is item 7.01, approval of amendment to the city's comprehensive plan map. Dr. Jones.
And this was what we were asked to put on the agenda tonight, from Aubrey, who came to our meeting last week, which was really looking at the fellow's property and the designation of the school, I'm going to say icon, it's not the right word, on the map. And they were asking that the school board would take actually a vote to support the way that she presented last week.
Any questions?
Has the city council voted on it?
They want to tell, they get all the, they've done an initial vote to send it out to the boards and commissions.
Okay, so we've, okay, so everyone else votes first, and then they, okay.
I don't know that there's any specific order for us, it's because we didn't meet the next two weeks, and then city council's kind of opposite from us.
So let me understand what we're voting on. Just the zoning change or the outright?
I think it's just the zoning.
Just the zoning change, that we supported.
And it is that 604 South Oak, specifically, the two attachments that are on there?
How does this dovetail into the ultimate annexation of the property?
I, I wouldn't go as far as saying annexation. I think it's just what they're trying to, with that designation, is to.
Park indoor school.
To give it the designation that it can go, if they purchase it, they will, can be a park or a school facility, to be able to do that, is what the designation, they're trying to do.
So it doesn't foreclose the existing.
Usage of it either. It adds an additional.
It merely adds the options for those in the comprehensive plan. And our act would be, sorry, Ms. Riedinger, our act is just to speak in support of doing that. So, I'm sorry.
Mr. Ankuma had said a zoning change. I don't think this is even a zoning change. It's just a change to the comprehensive plan. That would have to be accompanied by a zoning change and a, a taking action. So it just re-designates what the city can do or is planning to do with that site to include a possible school use among the possi, the planned uses for the property.
Okay.
And the resolution itself, as Dr. Jones is pointing out, the TR 16-31 is to amend the comprehensive plan for future land use plan map designation of low density residential to parks and open space with a school symbol for property at that site, 604 South Oak, and then to amend the future parks map in Chapter Six of the comprehensive plan to depict the site and the entire Thomas Jefferson Elementary School as other parks and open space. So.
Okay.
Mr. Webb.
And just to, to add a little bit of context to it, this also was sent out to the Parks and Recs Board, and I was at their meeting on Wednesday or Thursday, whichever night it was. They have general hesitations of doing this, more so because of the mon, their open space money, and what they don't want to is, if it ultimately, and they all feel, that ultimately it's, if we purchase the land because of the price and the expense of the purchase of this land, if we do it, it will not be used for, for parks, that it would be more of a use for us. And what they don't want to have happen is, I believe they have $2 million in an open space fund to help expand parks buying easements and those type of things, that that money would be held harmless if they ultimately decide to, to purchase the land, that it, that $2 million that's set aside for open space acquisition stays for actual park open space acquisitions, opposed to being rolled into a potential purchase of the land that then later gets eaten up by a purchase for schools.
Yeah, I believe this is CIP funding, it could happen, so that would not.
Yeah, but that's what, that's what their, their hesitation, I think, of what they are sending over to the council for their comments of, of this, is to make sure that money does not get gobbled up if the purchase happens. But they definitely are, the majority of the board were saying, you know, we know you're, the city's not going to purchase this land just to have it for parkland open space because of the potential $4 million cost of it, but they wanted their money not to be, to be gobbled up in that purchase. So that's what I know they're sending over to, to the council with their comments.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments, or would somebody care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board support city resolution TR 16-31, comprehensive plan map amendment as presented by the Falls Church City Department of Developmental Services.
Thank you, Mr. Riedinger.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, so that motion carries. Thank you. Next we come to, what's now item 8.02, the TJ HVAC budget amendment. Dr. Jones?
Basically, what we're requesting on here, Mr. Kimball has been working with Richard LaConde to find out what we can do flexibility-wise with the bond that we have on the TJ HVAC, because it's significantly under budget, we already know, as we go into the summer. And we have a unit at George Mason, exact same job, but it is on a different school, different school site, that has gone completely out and cannot be repaired. And then the other two units, one of them is a very large unit, they're all three on top of the auditorium. So our question to Mr. LaConde was, can we actually take some of that cost savings that we are seeing at TJ and be able to replace the unit that's completely out? Because we were trying to figure out how to fund that. And then to replace the other two, because they're, they're becoming incredibly difficult for us to keep going as well, and they're all end of life. And so what we would like to request is an amendment, and Mr. Kimball, you can add to that. I did send you an email that's, that is much more, it's easy to read, to explain that. So we're going to, we are asking for a budget amendment, is really what it is. And it really is a change of site. Same companies can do the work, it's just plopping them on Mason instead of TJ.
Mr. Kimball, were you gonna?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, that's fine. Just that, and there, $2 million, a bond for $2 million was issued for the TJ HVAC project, and currently about $665,000 of that is, is unobligated, because the, the price came in, you know, very reasonably. We would need, with a, an appropriate contingency and then construction management services, not more than $275,000 of that $665,000 to address the GM issue. This budget amendment would take place in, according to Mr. LaConde, in September. However, with the information I've provided and the time being of the essence that, you know, if the board approved this and, and Mr. LaConde, you know, is comfortable with the information, that we can proceed quickly to get this addressed.
Mr. Riedinger.
Just a quick confirming question. I know this from reading Dr. Jones' memo, but this is not a case where we have some excess money and we want to find a way to spend it. We have a need for the same sort of services. We already have a unit, as you pointed out, Dr. Jones, that's out. Two other units in the auditorium, I know, right now, already, we haven't been able to use the upper level because of the lack of air conditioning. So it's a present need. The fact that this came under budget gives us an opportunity, without going out for a new bond, to address a present need. And, you know, with that, I would say I strongly support the budget amendment.
Any other questions or comments? I just had one question, do the terms of the bond present any, have any specific requirements that it be at TJ, or are they sufficient?
That's why we're doing this.
Okay. But in other words, the terms of the bond itself, it's not?
Well, we did, well, that was actually our, our first question to, to Mr. LaConde, and, and he went away and, and came back to us, and, and at this point, the, I mean, it's for, it's for school HVAC.
And it could be full replacement like TJ.
Yes, and it cannot be a repair, it has to be a, a full replacement, which it is.
And it's more, that, that notwithstanding, it still makes more sense to replace than to repair.
They're beyond repair.
They're beyond repair.
Yeah.
And we actually tried to, the one that's completely out has been out since last spring, and we tried to repair it, and they just said, look, we, we can't do it. Actually, I think it started to fall apart when they took it apart. They're really old.
All right, any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board request the city council to amend the FY17 SAPP budget to use $275,000 of the $2 million bond proceed issued for the Thomas Jefferson HVAC project for the replacement of three HVAC units at George Mason High School.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Do I have a second?
A good.
Thank you, Mr. Ankuma. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that motion carries.
Do you have an assembly of the board materials? We've got three at the moment tonight.
We have board materials on the agenda. Dr. Jones?
Yeah, and the audit letter is just a basic informational, so you, letter for you, so you can read that. On the unaudited estimate, Mr. Kimball, I don't know if you wanted to mention anything with that. It is not official yet, but.
Exactly. You know, at this point in the year, we've got a pretty good idea about where, where we think we'll be in terms of an ending balance on, on each of the, the three school funds. And so I've prepared a brief report, again, unofficial, unaudited, in terms of FY16 last year, where we were with a beginning balance, and then the financial activity during the year, what revenues we received, what we've spent. Still, less open obligations, less some salary and benefit accrual adjustments that need to be made, as well as some additional revenue that we're, we're expecting. Primarily, it would be of the sales tax that we will receive from the state in August, which was collected in June, so we accrue that back to the fiscal year. Essentially, the operating budget fund balance was, is anticipated to go down to about $160,000. The other funds have smaller increases, about $138 in community services and food services, up about 18. And then, given all that financial activity, what at this point, as of this date, estimating the, the FY16 ending balance would be. And then below that, showing, deducting from that, what we have programmed in for FY17 in terms of use of fund balance, of, you know, of that 630 fund balance, how much is being designated to be used to support the FY17 budget? And then the balance of that would then be available to support and fund the FY18 budget. But again, these are, these are preliminary, and, and we'll probably have, have better numbers next, next month. They, they will be different next month, but.
But they won't be audited, I mean, we won't know that until December.
We probably, we will probably not have the audit until mid-November or mid-December, the official audit results.
So we have two, the, the fund balance sort of has two fund balances that leapfrog each other, right? There's the, there's the one that's already programmed for FY17, and then the next go-around, we're going to have the one that's at the bottom of the page.
Correct.
Any questions about this maddeningly.
Depressing.
Complex. Mr. Riedinger.
Just because I can't let it pass. Thank you, Mr. Kimball. Two, well, one question and one comment. The question is, refresh my recollection, for the FY17 use of fund balance, is there a line item in the budget for that in the revenue section?
There is, and it's specifically called, is it use of fund balance or carry forward? Like, I think it's use of fund balance, yes.
Okay. The, the other thing is just, as, as a general note, for the reporting pieces, it would be great if it's possible to just run it off as munis, as I said before.
Okay.
To do this by line item as well. I know that may be different from, you, like the monthly reports. I'd like to see that for the, and the unassigned or the end-of-year report on where we are on budget execution. I know that this is an audited, or a, a to-be-audited financial statement.
Sure.
But that's, that's the level of detail I'd like to see. Thank you.
Other questions?
I have one more.
Well, I've got one, you mean on this?
Oh, on this one, sorry.
Mr. Kimball, I think at the end of the third quarter, we were at 122 on the operating budget, as the estimate at the time. Is that?
At that point, we were anticipating the, that the amount available for carryover for use in FY18 was, was about 122. At this point, it looks like it's about, going to be around 490. And a lot of that has to do with purchase orders, obligations, closing, as well as, actually, the sales tax had, collections were, were higher than we, than we had, had budgeted.
And, and I noticed, maybe I've never noticed this before, the community services carry forward is quite substantial. What, what does that mean?
It's, it's primarily the daycare.
That's just the.
The daycare program.
Okay.
And also, I'll, I'll be honest, Upsy Padilla has done, and his team have done a really good job in terms of facility rentals, and especially the Peruvian elections. This year are, are big moneymakers for us rental-wise. So that was, it was a good year in, in terms of, of community use and rental.
Don't take on elections.
Don't even think about it, Mr. Chair.
No, I, I mean, we, we should be the polling place for the, well, they're 180-odd jurisdictions, so.
How about Turkey?
But, but, okay, so, so to, to somebody who would say, there you go again, just not getting the budgeting right, there's all this extra money that's showing up. Actually, we, with the, for fiscal year 18, that's an extraordinarily low number, isn't it? $25,000 or?
Well, at this point, with, with.
On top of the 465.
Well, with, with FY18, and what I'm, what I'm attempting to show there is, you know, assuming that we plug in the same amount of carry forward in FY18 that we currently have, that, that, that would leave us with $25,000.
So we're a little to the better.
Well, a little to the better.
Still pretty, pretty lean.
Which, which would mean, you know, assuming that these numbers get audited, and the official number, say, was $490,000 in terms of the unassigned fund balance for the current fiscal fiscal year we're in right now, FY17, we could go ahead and plan on plugging the $490,000 in for use of fund balance and carry forward to support FY18.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now the financials. Dr. Jones?
And this is really, again, just for your knowledge, and it is really important as we start going forward and looking at the GM MEH project, the Budget and Finance Committee are really talking about some policy pieces to how they want to approach finance. We do have a joint meeting coming up in August, and I'm sure we'll ask the city manager to reference these again, but they're looking at aspects of changing the way they operate a little bit, as in putting money aside for capital, and how they're going to do that, and what is the policy as far as, where is the threshold, as far as what they would be willing to bond according to policy? Are they willing, do they want to go above their policy and make a one-time vote that that's okay, if that's what's needed, or is it, we actually want to change the policy to have a higher threshold? So they're having lots of discussions like that. I have been literally to one meeting last Friday, but I felt like this was important enough that you need to read through it, and then maybe send questions. And the next meeting, I believe Justin and John will both be at the Budget and Finance meeting for, as well, and I'll let you know when that is, so if you want to sit on the peripheral and maybe listen as well. But these are pretty important going forward with some of the projects coming up, so I'd encourage you to read through them and see what questions you have. And there's some good graphics as well.
And just, I was out of town last week, but at the meeting before, one of the, one of the big issues is with respect to the policy and these numbers, there's some tension. I think it's fair to say, the existing policy reflects a sort of steady-state budgetary situation, where a lot of borrowing is not, a lot of capital needs are not built into that. And the question is whether and how that changes, and when. Should it be done prospectively? Should you, does the policy have weight in and of itself, or does the policy simply reflect a fiscal reality, and it's adjustable? And, you know, if you, if you say, well, the policy has legitimacy in and of itself, and if you try to do something in violation of the policy, then that shouldn't be done, that's one way to look at it. The other way is, you know, what are the needs, and how should a policy accommodate those needs? And that's the ongoing discussion of what, what is the way to move forward. I think there's a desire on the Budget and Finance Committee to acknowledge that we are in a state where we have needs, and we have to begin to move forward to find a way to fulfill those needs. So it is an important issue, and one that we are going to need to have a conversation about.
And Mr. LaConde has the unaudited, you know, end-of-year financial report on there too. Just again, he's like Hunter, it's still very early, but everything is signaling that FY17 budget, sorry, 18, will be just as difficult as FY17 at this time.
Any questions?
When do you anticipate we'll have this joint meeting with?
Yeah, I put it in last Friday's note, and at the top of my head, I want to say 12, 9?
August 9.
August 9, thank you.
Yeah.
And I'll put it in again this week.
So speaking of difficult years, what's kindergarten enrollment look like?
We are still, we're still hovering around that, I think it was officially like 170-ish, so we'll see where it ends up. Fifth grade was a grade that had spiked high last week.
For 170?
No, it's less than the average.
Oh.
Yeah. We're watching. I mean, it's all of elementary. I'm probably more worried about preschool, because preschool, we're identifying a lot of children out in the community, and, you know, sometimes children do, they need a one-on-one para with them because they have significant needs. So it'll be watching, what's the best use of that contingency? If it is one teacher, where will that go? And we've still held off on one position of the two, while we're watching elementary. So we have one in reserve, but we're watching everywhere right now, really. And then knowing, again, what you heard earlier tonight, there are a significant number of apartments that also open in September, and so you don't want to be too over the threshold, because it could really cause a grade level to be too large. Like fifth grade, once they hit 25, and our policy's 24, that was over enough in these rooms that aren't, a lot of them aren't that big at TJ. So that's where we took that first position, which we thought that would be one of our grades, but we're watching first grade as well. First grade's right at the top of policy, but the other thing about first grades, there's another adult in the room. So if you compare that to, like Jesse Thackeray, where if our enrollment continues to grow, we may need a whole other teacher, which means, are we talking about the sixth classroom? Or are we talking about a teacher that's rotating to work with different classrooms? So between now and September, we're watching it all very closely.
All right. If there are no other questions, then we can stand adjourned and still watch the convention.
Can I click on your signature online?